And we've been talking with the people who administer the state grant, and there's a very strong threat from the governor's office that those funds will be swept into the general account. And those that aren't really committed, and that's the way the state granting program officer sees it, that these funds aren't truly committed. They're allocated to the project, but unless there's a strong show of commitment to expend them, then they could be re- allocated to another project before the governor sweeps the funds away. So that's why it's important to move this to Finance Committee for the next step in the action.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
So my understanding is this, the land would belong to the New England Forestry Foundation, correct?
Yes, that's the proposal.
And has this been done before, where the town has purchased land, well, not really purchased land?
Not really purchased, yeah.
Roseanne, are you a town attorney?
Town attorney would probably be the one. Mr. O'Connell?
In my memory, the town has, in these instances, always purchased the land, it has not purchased a conservation easement.
Thank you.
If I can respond, in this case, the town would get the full benefit of protecting the land for less than thirty percent of the purchase price, and would be able to enforce the terms of the conservation easement, which means that we, as a landowner, would have the town and the state jointly monitoring our activities out there, so that if we, you know, can't imagine that we would, but in case there were a violation of the terms of the easement, there could be an enforcement action. That's the way conservation easements work.
On the map, I'm not quite clear where the easement would fall, where the easement properties would be that the town would control.
For the record, Steve Harney, 20 Island, the Court, East Line. I am the managing member of KSK Associates LLC, the fee owner of this property, and a sitting member of the Board of Finance and the chairman of the Board of Finance.
But you're not, but you're not speaking for the Board of Finance?
Correct. I'm speaking for Steve Harney, the managing member of KSK Associates. If this were to go to my board, obviously, based on your opinion letter that you got, I would recuse myself. At every meeting, I think I've acknowledged who I am and what positions I have. We're here just to supply you with the necessary information to make a decision. This entire parcel would be encumbered by a conservation easement.
The parcel that's shown in turquoise?
Correct.
And then where is the portion that would be owned by the forestry?
Well, the forestry would own the fee to that, so.
Could you, in layman's terms, what does that mean?
They would hold title. So I think whether our town has done it or not in the past, the concept of fee ownership and then conservation easements put on property to extinguish development rights is fairly customary in the land conservation business. So I know, I had asked what the driving force behind owning the fee or the title to the property was. So it's the same parcel. The title would be owned by New England Forestry Foundation. The state of Connecticut and the town of East Line would have conservation easements that really assure that the development rights are extinguished, that it's in open space in perpetuity, that there's passive recreation, in what other other language you want to put into the conservation easement. So it's not like the conservation easement is just a form, similar to what was done in Darrow. The town bought the property, but had a requirement to give a conservation easement. And in that case, I think it was what, the Friends of Osagachi Hills, Tracy, that took the conservation easement in Darrow.
In Darrow?
Okay.
Two different places.
All right. I thought they held it.
All right. So we have this area that's shown in turquoise. Now, for the conservation easement, does that mean that the public would have the right to walk through the forest?
Yes, yep.
So there would be no limits? The public could go anyplace on this property?
Correct. There's probably, I mean, they would have walking trails on it, but the property would be accessible for passive recreation. That's a stipulation in the state's grant as well.
Now, as part of an earlier presentation, it was stated that the forestry group would make some, would regain their investment by harvesting some of the trees, perhaps planting other trees to replace those, but the town would have no control over how much of that property could be cut or replanted with new growth. That would be completely under the control of the forestry group.
I guess they can speak to that. They would put together a sustainable forest management program. And I don't think the cutting of it is anything that happens on an annual basis, but they'll manage the forest to best practices. But, you know, I'm not a forester, so I'll certainly win.
I stated at a previous session that our first step when we acquire a new property, and after granting a conservation easement, in this case, to comply with the stipulations of the state grant, we would conduct a natural resources inventory of the plants, the forest, the wildlife, including birds, amphibians, and mammals. We would involve stakeholders. We would set up a management committee. In this case, we don't always do that, but when there's a partnership, a collaboration like we're proposing, we do that. Be a number of stakeholders on that committee, including representatives of town boards, the East Line and Niantic Conservation Trust, probably the Niantic River Watershed Committee, and others that have supported the state grant proposal application, which were several different organizations. Compile a management plan, which would be a ten-year management plan, and then, depending upon what the prescriptions are and recommendations in that plan, we would, over time, carry them out. It might include harvesting of trees to keep the forest healthy. It's not our goal to recoup our money through harvesting activities. I mean, if we derive some income from it, we probably would be less than a break-even basis. But our goal is, as an organization, our mission is to show other woodland owners what sustainable forest management is all about.
Thank you.
And we are green certified. There are two different independent organizations who look at our forest management activities on an annual basis. They do an in-depth audit every five years, and they pick a property where there's been a recent harvest to determine if, in fact, we're meeting the very specific outlines and goals of those certifying organizations, they being the Forest Stewardship Council and the American Tree Farm System. And all of the properties we own across New England are certified that way.
Thank you. Now, the trails, we would, on the town part, we would be responsible for putting in any trails through there, or?
No, I don't see any town expense in either creating or maintaining trails. The trail locations would be part of a forest management planning process, of a resource management planning process, really. And we often get trail work done by volunteers, so we would want to involve volunteer community in doing that. But no, I don't think that there would be any, any construction cost expenses or any annual maintenance expenses for the trail system that would fall to the town. And the way we've, the way we have worded trail easements in the past is to make them relocatable, so if they're, for some reason, it's, you know, maybe the town or ourselves would acquire an adjacent piece of property, which we actually hope to do, I've said that at previous meetings, we might want to move a trail so that we could connect it to a trail on an adjacent property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A couple, a couple questions. This is kind of a unique application before, because we're being asked to spend money, but we're not going to have ownership of it. Part of my concern lies that we're talking about eighty percent taxpayer money to preserve this, but we're not going to have any ownership of it.
I don't think we're talking eighty percent.
Well, between the town money and the state grant, right, it's taxpayer money. Whether it's all, it's not coming off from the town, but it's taxpayer money to preserve this. So it's, it's a unique proposal, and that immediately gives me pause that we're going to, the government's going to spend that much money, we're going to have just a conservation easement. Some of the controls, we're not going to, like, with the conservation easement, that does give us some controls, but it doesn't give us all controls. Doesn't let us control hunting on the property. It, like we talked about, the logging, that that's going to go toward, you know, your land trust. And it is in the Route 11 area, and if Route 11 comes in and it gets eminent domain, who's going to get that money? Is the town going to get reimbursed for their portion, or is it?
There would be an appraisal done of the value of the property at the time, and whoever has put money into the project would get the, get reimbursed or get paid by the, by the authority that took the property, and it would be prorated between the value of the conservation easement and the value of the underlying land. Now, the town, in this instance, and the state would be getting the conservation easement combined, if it were eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, for probably about what that conservation easement is worth, the development value of that land, probably actually less. So when an appraisal is done in the future, the state and the town would get paid for the value of the conservation easement that was taken, and we would get compensated for the value of the land with the conservation easement on it.
So what's the value of the conservation easement worth?
That separate appraisal's not been done, except that the entire parcel's been appraised twice, and this is, this goes back a couple of years now, at the million three hundred thousand or just under that.
Okay, so that-
So typically, a conservation easement down here with high development value, conservation easement value is going to be somewhere between eighty nine, ninety percent of the full value of the property. And the Connecticut DEP was, gave the maximum grant award for this particular project. It would, it would, on a value basis, it would have awarded more, but there were, there's a ceiling on the grant award, so it was five hundred thousand.
Does that not, the value of the conservation easement not, isn't it dependent on the quality of the land and the, how developable the land is?
Yes, always.
Right? Okay. So we don't know, so we, I agree, we have the appraisals, but I don't know what the, what the value of the easement is. So-
Mr. Harney may be-
Apparently, it's, you know, with, with the two grants, I'm getting, it's, we're being sold to, and I'm going to include the state money, because it's taxpayer money, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's fair.
Right. So I don't know if that's what the, that easement's worth. Well, I don't have that information.
The appraisals done on the property were done in its current state, just as vacant land with no approvals.
Mm-hmm.
So clearly, as our public hearing tomorrow may bring to light, when you can, you know, value of land is figured out based on the highest and best use of the land. This was not, even though it was, there was ninety lots approved on it back in the eighties, this land was valued, would it in its natural state. That said, if you talk to the people at the DEP, rule of thumb is a conservation easement will be eighty percent of the value of the property, the extinguishment of the development rights or the value of the conservation easement. Because many people will go and apply to this grant program at the state to get a conservation, or a grant for a conservation easement and maintain ownership of the property. I mean, similar to the case you, I think, had, the person that owned that property put a conservation easement on it at some point, right? And, okay, now, we, but no, as a rule of thumb, so the development value was almost irrelevant at this point, because it wasn't appraised as a development. It was appraised as raw land. So the value that was three years ago at seventy-two hundred dollars an acre was that land with no approvals or anything on it. And I'll say that I just got a copy two days ago of a recent appraisal done by one of the individual that appraised this, that did the same thing on a property in town, and now, based on comps from sales in Killingworth, Colchester, and Old Lime, of properties that sold in a R forty zone without anything approved, is it a value of thirteen thousand five hundred an acre? So the developability of this is really not germane to our discussion, because it wasn't appraised as anything other than raw land.
Was the date of that last appraisal then, 2012?
Two appraisals were done in June of 2012. So that value is in June of 2000. I think in one of the prior meetings we had, somebody commented on, should we get it appraised again? If we go out and get it appraised again, my hunch is the value of this hundred and sixty-six acres will be somewhere in the vicinity of two point two million dollars and not one point two million dollars.
So if we, first of all, I do believe this property is valuable for preserving. I agree with Mr. Mingle, I agree with Mr. Carlson's study, I went through his study. It is ranked on the, you know, in the top forty or fifty properties in town for acquisition or for extinguishment of development rights. So I grant there's value here. But if we're gonna, but I'm stuck on not having ownership of it, you could almost make the argument, I'd rather eighty percent, or you spend a hundred percent and you get the whole, you get, you get it, and you control it, and the town controls it, and we put all the controls on it. We control, we control what logging's done, we control public access, we control whether there's hunting. We lose all that.
Well, then I think you pay somewhere because-
Concerned that if there's a violation of the conservation easement, that this town is going to have to fund the, the legal battle with that. So even though we've given a lot of money toward this, if there's something going on there, there's illegal dumping, there's something going on, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but, you know, we're going to have to pay for that.
Let me respond to that.
And enforce it.
Let me respond to that, that particular point. The Land Trust Alliance, which is a national trade group for land trusts, has formed its own insurance wing called Terra Firma, and any entity that holds a conservation easement for sixty dollars a year or seventy dollars a year can ensure that conservation easement. And if there's a violation that's litigated, the, I guess, the maximum amount that the easement holder would have to pay to protect that property, again, involved in litigation, is five thousand dollars. After that, Terra Firma takes over and pays for all the rest.
You have the foremost experts here in the audience that have defended a conservation easement, so I don't know if they care to comment on that. But yeah, the most recent Connecticut Land Conservation Council, that particular firm presented, because I think the Lime Conservation Land Trust was faced with the same thing, and after seven or eight years of contentious litigation, I think the land trusts, with the expertise of Waller, Smith &amp; Palmer, and Tracy Collins, won, albeit I think it's under appeal, but, and I'd be curious just to hear their feedback, if the board would indulge them, as to that insurance program, because it was brought up, and I think it was formed just for that reason. To comment on your purchase, you know, a lot of these transactions are done in what I'll call the public-private partnership. So you're right, the public side of the partnership is the federal government, the state, the local municipality, and then the private side is philanthropic foundations or philanthropic individuals that have an affinity to preserve land. The town certainly can look at buying the whole thing. I think somewhere, if that was their desire, to pay the balance or get a new appraisal on what it's worth, I suppose that's an option. We looked at it and thought it was the cheapest, most cost-effective way for the town to actually preserve all this, so the development rights are extinguished. At really what amounts to a fraction of what will be debated, or our memorandum of understanding to go find a property for Mr. Russo to go somewhere else, even though there was no numbers in the paper, I'm guessing that the value we're talking about's in the vicinity of seven or eight million dollars to go extend.
But some of my concern is, so there can be logging there, right?
Correct.
And how much can be logged at a time? Is there any, obviously, you're not going to be able to log within the wetlands, right? That's going to be controlled by the, in the Wetlands Commission.
That, that's right. That would be controlled by state and federal and-
But there's a lot of uplands here.
Local section.
So it's theoretically possible, it's not going to happen, that the whole thing could be logged, right?
Well-
Theoretically. It's not best management practice, I get it.
What's your definition of logging, I guess I would ask?
Well, I mean, the whole thing could be logged, take, cut, cut most of the trees down.
Like clear cut, you mean?
Clear cut. Clear cut, right? Worst-case scenario.
I think that would be a severe violation of our, of our green certification, which says-
I'm not arguing that, I'm just, I'm just saying theoretically, worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario, nineteen thirty-eight hurricane could come back and flatten it all. And one of the things that we do in our forest management practice is, one of our goals is to create uneven-aged forests where we own land. An uneven-aged forest is much more resilient to catastrophic loss from storm damage, from the potential of fire, which is really pretty small in New England, and from insect and disease pests. So if you have, and Mother Nature doesn't create an uneven-aged forest on such a small tract. It would take literally a hundred years for a number of small storm events or some sort of disease vectors or pathogens, other, you know, some sort of pathogen to get in there and create small openings in that forest over time. So what man does to accelerate things, to get to the point where you have an uneven-aged forest, a more resilient forest, it's also going to be more resilient to climate change, is to go in and do selective logging from time to time. I would not envision us being in there with logging equipment more than once every twelve years. And maybe not that often. Or we would have a licensed forester be part of the management planning process for this tract of land. If we were to go in and clear cut against what the forest management plan says, we would pretty quickly lose our certification, and that would not be a good thing for the organization.
I agree with what you said, I agree with you at the best. I'm just trying to find worst-case scenarios here, so we know where we're standing.
Try and be an optimist. Let me just, in summary, because I've been in front of you guys many times, right? I think the impetus of what brought us here was a letter that, in fact, was sent by your previous first selectman, Arthur Carlson in the back, who was the chairman of the Natural Resource Commission, and Mike Bowers, who was the chairman of planning. And they all signed that letter that I read into the record last time, that said, "The town of East Line, aside from outright purchase, can work with broad flexibility regarding its purchasing of the development rights or various conservation easements, which would preserve the land as open space under your ownership," meaning ours. So what kind of mystifies me is, five years ago, in May, I got this letter from you guys. You reached out to my group, to which we came, and the town, we, I asked the town if they wanted to be the applicant and own this, and I was speaking on deaf ears, regardless of the letter I received. So a group took it upon itself to form a land trust, because the East Lime Land Trust at that time was defunct and had lost its 501(c)(3) tax exemption. So in spite of all that, we put together a land trust with our own money, applied for a grant, got a half a million dollar grant. We came to you when we were doing the grant process, and we got letters of support from your board in June of 2012, the Inland Wetlands Commission, the Planning Commission, the Commission on Natural Resources, the Niantic River Watershed Commission, SCOG. This thing has been vetted, so I don't even understand. To me, it, it amazes me that you guys haven't pushed this forward, because your duty, like mine, sitting on the Board of Finance, is to move things to the voters and the taxpayers and the residents of East Lime. This is absolutely consistent with your plan of conservation and development, the regional plan of conservation and development, the Connecticut Green Plan. So I sit here, I don't even know why I'm fighting so hard. This is a great project, right, for a fraction of what this town has spent on other ones. Clearly, the will of the people through your community survey is indicative of the residents' desire to preserve land, protect forest blocks, have passive recreation. I mean, it's evident. Every referendum we've had on open space, Darrow Pond, right, the town bought three hundred acres, put two hundred into open space, and paid four point two million dollars. Not a dollar was raised in a grant or by a philanthropic organization. And then many years later, we stroke a check for six hundred and fifty thousand to end litigation that was over that piece and everything else. We spent almost five million dollars on that piece. And then we vote, and that passed at two and a half to one in favor to buy Darrow. The gas station, a third of an acre, right, for the bargain basement price of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and contaminated, went to a referendum and passed, I think, three and a half to one. So the will of the people, I think, is there, this project, I think, is worthy. We can get into the semantics of ownership and conservation easements, but there's no trick bag here. The whole point was to get the town to get on board and lead by example. It kind of mystifies me that we go to the federal government for money, the state, philanthropic organizations and individuals, all of which who don't live in East Lime. Now, it may be taxpayer-public money. The only empty seat at the table's the town. Yet they sent all these letters and wrote all these recommendations, and we're still sitting here. It's discouraging for my group, because at some point in time, this piece will get developed. My group can do it, we could sell it to somebody or option them, they could do a conservation development, they could go in for an affordable housing development. So yeah, we're, we're here trying to be proactive on what we, I believe, the value is more than substantiated. The participation at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is minute compared to what we've done on other properties and projects. So I, I mean, I encourage you guys to pass it forward to the Board of Finance to look at the numbers on it, and ultimately, go to the voters. If they don't want this, they'll vote it down in the town meeting. If any of you guys individually is against open space, watershed protection, passive recreation, like me, you sit on a board, you're entitled to one vote. I still think it's an obligation for your board, my board, to go move things forward, to let the voters decide. I think we vetted it, I think the DEP has. And yeah, I just encourage you to think hard. Many deals have contingencies in it. Additional money has to be raised for this, right? If the town commits to three fifty and we can't raise the balance of the money, there's no deal. I think all your concerns would be worked out in the language of a conservation easement that's filed on the land records, protects everybody. I think the eminent domain thing, clearly, my suggestion would be, because we're willing to sell it into open space, we don't, any proceeds that came from an eminent domain condemnation should go into a fund to find additional open space in town. I don't think the state would have a problem with that. Certainly, I don't think the town would, and I don't think NEF would.
Just to add to a point to that, that the standard conservation easement language has a provision there for what happens if land is seized by an authority. And it, it's the ratios between the value of the land unencumbered and the value of the conservation easement appear right in there, and it's a, it's a ratio that's, say, constant. The value of that land's going to go up over time. Route 11, if it happens at all, we're looking at probably fifteen, fifteen or twenty years out, and at that point, the land's going to be worth a whole lot more, and the town would get more than its three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back.
Okay, so I'm trying to get all the facts there, I'm not, so if, if Route 11 goes in, you're saying we get reimbursed, East Line would get reimbursed for, let's say it's eighty percent of the-
It wouldn't, if you want to put more money into the project, that would be terrific.
No, 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 no. If this purchase goes forward, you hold the title, right?
Yes.
The state comes in and takes fifty acres of it for Route 11, right? What you, what you told me is that- What you, what you told me is that the town will be reimbursed, or the town and the state would be reimbursed for.
Somewhere around eighty percent of it.
Which you're saying is seventy or eighty percent.
Right.
And then, New England Forestry would get the.
I said eighty, eighty to ninety, I think.
Then, so you're testing, and then you're saying, then the rest would go to the title holder.
Correct. That's, that's standard, that's what the law says. Put it that way.
Hmm, okay. I did not know that, and that's why I'm trying to get the facts out there.
Conservation easement, it's a concept that's sometimes hard to get your head around, but it's a division of the bundle of rights between the development value and the remaining value. And what an appraiser does, when he or she comes in and does an appraisal specifically of conservation easement value, is there's first a highest and best used value, and then there's an after value. What's that land worth with the conservation easement in place? It's always going to be less than the conservation, than the highest and best used value, right? The difference is what the conservation easement itself is worth. So the land is worth something after the easement's in place. It's, it's always going to be there for wildlife and water quality protection, in some cases, water supply protection, for agricultural use, if that's one of the purposes of the easement, is to protect active farmland. In this case, it would be active forest land. So there's some value left. There's always value in a piece of conserved land that has an easement on it. A butters would always want to buy that. Some wealthy person would want to come in and say, gosh, you know, I want to own.
Not, not to belabor, but.
Right.
We've been stuck on easement for a long time. Do you have, do you have any other questions, Mark?
No, 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 that's.
I mean, just, you're right. I mean, Rob, any questions?
Listen, I'm.
Just want me.
Chairman Carlson, I think, put together a, of natural resources, put together a nice kind of, summed it up, and I think his summary in, and in part, in the, in his report, there was nine separate entities that recognized the headwaters, his preserve that was valuable and should be looked at as being preserved. Deep being one of them, and that's where the money came from. And I do believe that we, we were a party to this in, in offering our assistance or at least being on board with pushing. We never said no, that this isn't a good thing. We said, go out there and see what you can do, apparently. And by God, they did. And here we are, you know, June two thousand and twelve was, was a while ago, but, you know, I can still remember, we, we agreed with the concept, and so did a bunch of others. And after reading all of this, the, Mark's, you know, discussion on the easements, it boils down to writing the easement is, is not going to be us, it's going to be some talented attorneys for, that are looking out for our interests, and that all parties are protected, I think, and that's, that's where it boils down to. And for me, this is, this is the other part of that extension of what we've all been trying to do and what we've been litigating over years in different parts of town to do similar, similar deals. So for me, I'm willing to go ahead and push this along to the Board of Finance if there's another creative way to come up with the money that is our, our portion of this, or however they go about doing this. But at this point, I think we've, I, for me, we've been doing this a while, I trust.